Good evening and welcome to Speedway Town Council Special Session Meeting for August 21st, 2019. I call this order, this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. My name's Eileen Fisher. I'm President of Speedway Town Council. Others in attendance this evening, to my far right, right to left, we have Counselor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
We have Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Counselor Jason Delyles.
Good evening.
Have Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
And Town Clerk Monte Combs.
Good evening.
To start our meeting, for everyone to stand, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our special session meeting tonight is to consider the approval of a closing of Biltmore Avenue on school days only between 2:45 PM and 3:20, and this is to help St. Christopher schools dismiss parents who pick up their students there at the school during the release hours. So we will go ahead, we have a few people in attendance this evening from St. Christopher. We have the principal, Karen, if you want to step up, we'll maybe tell, explain the map of what you've and what your decisions are, and what you've talked about there, to maybe take the changes and get this moving forward.
Sure. Thank you. First of all, thank you for your time tonight. I know that you pulled together a special meeting for us, so thank you, it is very much appreciated. As Eileen said, I'm Karen King, I'm the school principal. I've been at St. Christopher for 31 years, so 25 years as a teacher, and this is my sixth year as principal. So I've got a lot of history there, and I have seen the way that our morning and drop-off and dismissal processes have changed over the years, and why they used to work, and why they no longer work. I have with me this evening Father Jude Merrill, he's our associate pastor, and on behalf of Father Paul Shikani, who has a rare couple of days out of town visiting a sick friend, we thank you for your time tonight. Joe Stevens is a former St. Christopher School parent, and now a current St. Christopher School grandparent. He does a lot of IT work for our school and church, and has joined me on our school safety council that we started last year. Joe's our chair of that council. And then behind me here is Mrs. Tracy McKee, who has been a teacher at St. Christopher for over 25 years, so she's got the history too. Her children went to St. Christopher, and she is a member of our school safety council as well. So, thank you all for being here this evening. To give a little bit of history, last year I was invited to attend the training put on by the Indiana Department of Education for school safety specialists. And I invited Joe Stevens, who, like I said, does a lot of our IT, and he's been on board with cameras in the school, and anything involving security, so he was a good choice. Steve Quinnett, who is our maintenance man, joined us, and another parishioner who is on our parish council. So the four of us went through this school safety specialist training from the Indiana Department of Education. We learned a lot. We saw what we needed to do to make our school safer. And so we got to work right away on doing a lot of those things, besides what we're here to talk about tonight. And then, late in the spring, the Archdiocese of Indianapolis brought to my attention that we could have a school safety audit. So I invited in this team of safety and security specialists, and we spent a day going through a checklist and getting feedback from that. And I specifically asked them at that time to be present for our school dismissal. Because over the years, it, what once worked, no longer worked. And I wanted them to see it, and they said it was chaotic, which I already knew, but that was hard to hear as a school principal. So, over the last 30 years, we've had a process in the morning that was separate from the process in the afternoon. In the morning, cars pulled up to the school building, the back doors of the school building on the parking lot, we would have three cars in a row, children would get out, they were greeted by adults there, and they'd walk into the building. Pretty secure situation all around. Over the last three to four, five years, suddenly we had parents dropping off their children before school was open, even though it was very clear that there would be no adult supervision prior to 7:30. We had students getting dropped off at 10 after 7, quarter after 7. And by 7:30, that glass enclosure at the back of our building had 30 to 35 students in it. Not safe. In the afternoon, previously, we had cars all pulling onto our parking lot, facing the school building, the students all dismissed, went to their cars, but no adult could really be assured that that child was getting in the right car. We had children walking between cars. 30 years ago, this worked. We had bigger families, we had families that car pooled, we had more students that stayed in our aftercare program. But as times have changed, and we have more families that aren't working eight-to-five shift kind of jobs, we have a lot more parents picking up. So, currently, we have 151 families registered at St. Christopher. We have 97 parking spots on our property. That includes the back parking lot, that includes the lot where, to the west of the building where teachers park. So not a lot of extra room for cars parking for pickup. So over the last several years, we had parents parking on 15th Street and causing chaos at 15th Street, and on Biltmore, and going both directions, and we had, despite directions of parents needing to walk up to their children, we had children walking out into the street because their parents were waving them down. Again, unsafe. So as we were looking at all of these, and with our newfound training, we knew that we needed to change all of these unsafe practices. So, our plan moving forward was to keep everything as identical as possible. Previously, morning and afternoon were drastically different. Morning worked fairly well, so we came up with a plan of dropping the cars, or dropping the students off by cars we had previously, letting them out into the building. That was safe. To curtail the problems there, we just closed off the parking lot until a certain time, we opened it, no children are now left unattended. Problem solved. To keep the afternoon similar to the morning, we devised a plan, bringing traffic in from either direction on 15th Street into Biltmore, bringing more cars onto our parking lot by having the south side of the parking lot cars rotating through to curve around to the door where children would get out and come into the building. Met with the Speedway police after making a number of different connections with an officer who brought us up, and you know, we got all the way up to the chief. So we met with the chief, and the assistant chief, and lieutenant captain, Dierdorf. And they changed kind of what we had, and said, "No, this would be better, and thank goodness, they're looking at the bigger community, I don't have that knowledge." So we went with their plan. And then I announced it to our families, and as all of you know, change is hard. And I think that there was just this mindset of, "This is different, we need to get there." So we had basically 151 cars descend upon us all at the same time that first morning, and just in six days of doing this, it's already gotten drastically better. But, that first day, I thought, "What have we done?" So, each day, we worked as a team, all of us here, Father Paul, Jason Dierdorf, sometimes the cap, the chief was there, we talked, and said, "Okay, what can we do to make this better?" And each day, we made improvements. We doubled the lines in our parking lot, we moved staff parking lot, and for the third time, "Don't park here, now let's park here, let's try this." So we've tried, we've tried, we've tried, we've tried. We've now at the point where we are bringing three rows of cars into our parking lot that now have to filter into two rows to go through the port de coucher, which is the passageway into the church, and then filter into one line to come around the curve to pick up their children. So there's still a lot of like zipper crossing, and it's a lot of additional faculty and staff out there working, morning and afternoon. But we're getting there. We still have had backup all the way on Biltmore. Yesterday's storm did not help. We had to hold our students, we dismissed about five or six minutes later than we typically do. So the traffic on 16th Street was much worse yesterday than it had been the day before. I was out there at the corner today, and the biggest backup took place between 3 o'clock and 3:05, where we had 10 cars backed up on 16th Street. And our understanding is, that's a danger to drivers driving down 16th Street, that's a busy thoroughfare. And so we want to bring all of that traffic in, out of there completely. Today, as the cars were backed up from our Biltmore driveway, where they enter our parking lot, to 16th Street, there were 11 cars there. Probably, there could have been 12. They didn't, you know, there were plenty of spaces between the cars, and one of those was a daycare bus that picks up. So potentially, so our proposal would be to close Biltmore down during our school dismissal, so that we could bring all of that additional traffic off of 16th Street onto Biltmore, having two to three lanes all going south, getting off the busy thoroughfare, they're lined up and ready to enter our parking lot, so that they can come around and get their children. Each car has a tag, we have walkie-talkies, we're calling the children, they're coming out in order. Our bell time today was 3:20 that we didn't quite beat, but we whittled it down each day, and yet we still can't get rid of that tail end of traffic that comes out on 16th Street. If you go back to that, change is hard. We now have cars lining up at 2 o'clock, we dismiss at 3 o'clock. They're making, they're making the choice to sit there for an hour to be first in line. Others have learned, "Oh, I can come driving in at 3:13 and just drive right on through to the parking lot." So a lot of it's going to be, moving forward, how our parents respond to it. But our responsibility is to keep the community safe, the drivers on 16th Street, so we need to figure out another way to get them in, out of the way of traffic, blocking traffic. We discovered last week when it was really getting backed up, that there were cars that had nothing to do with St. Christopher. They were just driving down 16th Street, and they see this row of cars all with their lights on, and they just stopped and got in line, not realizing that these cars were in line to turn onto Biltmore. And so that added to the backup, and then they got up to the corner, and like, "Oh, well, I'm not turning there, I'm going straight." So, we want to avoid causing problems to the community. And I know that school dismissals across the country, as I've talked to people, are, this is how it happens. But we're unique in that we are on 16th Street, a much busier thoroughfare. So, I think I've kind of gotten through. Yeah, so ultimately, our goal for this whole process is that we're keeping our students safe. And just as importantly to that is, we're keeping the community safe. You know, our school loves being part of the Speedway community, and we want to remain in good graces with everybody in our community, so that is our request to you, that we, that we close down Biltmore during our dismissal. And I don't know if any of my team would like to add anything that I may have skipped or need to clarify?
I think that covers it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, we had a diagram that came along with this.
Yes.
Is this, it sounds like you're doing a version of this today? Is that fair?
We're doing a version of just one.
Just a single?
Line, because for example-
Row going south on Biltmore?
Yes.
Today?
Because it's a public street, the cars can go that way. But today, for the first time, on our sixth day of dismissal, is that right, seventh day, sixth day, we had a car that turned from 15th Street headed north on Biltmore. He had nothing to do with our, you know, and so the teacher that was at the edge of the parking lot, "Stop this car from coming in, stop this car," you know. It doesn't happen often, but we can't legally send cars all southbound because it's open for.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question is, just looking at the diagram here too, and I don't know if you can see this, but if you have three-
I about have it memorized.
The three rows here coming south?
Yes.
This seems like a little bit of a choke point here, so as cars are coming out-
So-
Have you had any issues with this, or do you feel confident that rows coming, or cars coming out, as well as cars coming in, that that should be, shouldn't be an issue?
It's a little tight. I have two faculty members directing traffic right now. But over the summer, we met with, and this was under the direction of my maintenance man, but we are all of it signed on the dotted line with Harding Group to widen that drive. So, we have a meeting actually Monday morning, so we will actually widen the drive on our property to make that transition a little easier.
The curb cut, you mean?
The curb cut, yes. Mm-hmm.
But I think what's happening now is-
If you would mind coming to my-
The cars coming south on Biltmore are waiting until there's clearly room to get all the way onto our lot, so that cars coming out can either go south or north without having to wait on them.
Okay. Okay.
I've actually witnessed that, and I think it's to their benefit if they let someone out, that makes room for them to come on.
Exactly.
And, you know, it's different than when we go to the car wash, and we're all jockeying for that spot, right? We're, but everybody there is on, should be on the same team.
Right.
A question I have is, you said you're out directing traffic. I want to make sure that the town and St. Christopher's liabilities are covered there, because a citizen, a resident, whatever, out in the street directing traffic is not the responsibility of the town, and it shouldn't fall on the town. I'm assuming there's been some conversation with our police department?
Yeah, you are absolutely right. In fact, when we met with Jason Dierdorf recently, because I had asked about the possibility, having seen, you know, crossing guards, and he explained the difference to me between the crossing guard and directing traffic. And so, that beginning day or two, I did have a teacher out there in the middle of Biltmore. She's in the parking lot now, so she's on our property. Yeah.
So I guess I have a follow-up question to that.
Sure.
If you don't have people out in the street, when they're turning from 16th Street, and you say they have tags to turn on to Biltmore, correct?
So they have tags on their car that have, like, you know, it's a sheet of paper that's like this, and it would say, you know, in big letters, "King," and then, you know, "What grade, first name Karen." So then we have teachers with walkie-talkies. So our parents have been instructed not to, we have a hole cut out where they can hang it from the rearview mirror.
So, sorry, but-
That's okay.
So what's, to stop a regular, normal citizen that does not have one of those tags from turning, when there's no one on 16th and Biltmore?
Nothing. They have every right to turn.
And if we agree for the closure, there's still no one out to watch that, correct?
Well, so then it depends on what that entails for the closure, if we're able to put up signs that say, "Closed during these hours," or "Southbound only during those hours." That's where I would lean on you for your expertise on how that would best be handled.
What is your recommendation at this point, based on having talked to our police department and your own safety people?
Yeah.
What's your recommendation in terms of signage?
I think, well, so they've recommended, "Right turn only," like out of our parking lot, but a sign if we're able to do this, that has just the hours that it can be used, or "Southbound only from 2:45 to 3:15," or whatever we come up with. That would become a legal part of-
I have a little bit of knowledge about traffic.
Yeah. I'll rely on you to help me with that, then.
A suggestion would be to block northbound traffic, there's no northbound. And then, I would place a sign at each corner, at 16th and Biltmore, that would say that this is closed, or this is school, "Parents only between these certain hours."
Restricted.
Okay.
Yeah. Because to me, this is not a closure, this is restricted, I think's the way to word it, which I think needs to occur.
Uh-huh. And is that something the school does? Not the town? I want to make sure we do this right.
Personally, I think there's, just experience of different organizations that have come on to the town's property, whether it be a park, or even a public school that we have somewhat dotted line authority for, or keep our streets, or the town council, the same as you're using our parking lot-
Right.
-during your functions. There needs to be some checks and balances that go through legal, and I say that very cautiously, because we, none of us want to run up our costs on legal fees.
Right.
We want to make sure we protect ourselves, and that's, that's what your diocese, our diocese has been doing, to encourage your, creating a safer environment for your children and your visitors. So I think, to Dave's point, is that, and he is an expert, he's a police officer that's directed a lot of traffic in his day.
Okay.
It needs to be the proper language on a sign, it needs to be placed in the right location, based on the experts' opinions of that.
Uh-huh.
But at the same time, you don't want this to drag out for weeks.
Right.
Because you're improving, as you said, in six days. I've witnessed it, both mornings and afternoons, myself, and today I saw, and it's improving.
Yes.
So, and in time, it'll improve even more. But I, personally, I think, when we get to that point, if we move forward with a-
Motion.
A motion, thank you, Jeff. It should include some, subject to, legal, subject to a couple more experts' opinions on where signage is.
And I even think for the southbound, or I'm sorry, for the eastbound lane along the curb, maybe some additional signage there, that the school could put out, maybe speak to the homeowners.
Eastbound on the north?
South.
On the-
For cars that are going east toward, towards the school on 16th Street, where that curb lane could be just for the school.
Yes.
And then that way, that would stop the cars from getting stuck in line.
Right.
They would say, "Oh, this is for the school," and they could go and proceed around, because from, is it Norfolk, east?
Worth.
Worth, well, there's-
Oh, east.
It's one lane on Cunningham around the 16th, and I think it's Norfolk where it goes to two lanes.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
Maybe start there, maybe speak to the homeowners and get some kind of signage. I think that's temporary signage, I don't think it needs to be something permanent.
Yeah, okay.
And then, block the northbound to where that's blocked. And obviously, to me, I think if someone wants to turn, I think they will, they'll still have the ability to turn, but I think it's good to keep as many cars that can go in as should.
And essentially, you're creating a one-way.
Yeah.
Based on the way this diagram is.
Right.
Are we also saying, "No parking"?
Yes.
So there's a lot to put on signs.
And-
There were a lot of signs to put out, one of the-
Uh-huh. And right now, because St. Christopher owns the property on the east and the west sides of Biltmore, the only people who generally parked there were faculty and staff members, and I've moved them off of that. So, not to say that somebody couldn't, because they could, right now it's an open street. And then we'd have to deal with that, obviously, but-
But that's also not to say that, I think this, I think there needs to be more conversation about this.
Okay.
That's not to say that there can't be some type of "No parking" on school days.
Okay.
That's something I think should, should be considered.
Okay.
Just to help your traffic flow.
So what is our next step on that? Do we, do we come up with a proposal again and come back to all of you, or is that something where we can direct, directly work with an expert, or someone of, you know?
I'm by no means an expert.
[laughing]
To me, I think, to go back to the police department, Jacob, your office, I think there needs to be some more conversation about it.
Right.
I think, I'm, maybe some type of motion, maybe to at least block northbound for you now, I think that would, one that would definitely help with safety, to where your staff and the people that are coming southbound or not, you know, where the, I think our street department could go and provide some type of stuff to help you with that.
Okay.
And then, the signage and that, I think needs to, I think there needs to be some more conversation with that.
Eileen's president, but I maybe would encourage the council to get that motion, and Dave, you've made some good suggestions, maybe make that motion, and give us an opportunity to actually discuss it and amend it if we feel like there's a few more additions we want to put into it.
Can I add something?
Sure.
And maybe you realize this, but I just want to point out, if we end up doing this plan of blocking off Biltmore and having multiple lanes going south, we're fairly confident that there won't be any backup on 16th Street at all. We'll be able to get all of the cars, I mean, like, right now, we're seeing maybe 10 to 12 cars at most backed up. Those will easily fit onto Biltmore, and so there shouldn't be any backup on 16th.
And I think that's why the signage on 16th, on that lane, should be just maybe, not a permanent sign, but there's still going to be some people that will pass through that, and go through there every day, that may use that as a cut-through, that then they'll see that sign, "Oh, this is closed between these hours."
Yeah, okay. My, another concern I have is when the weather changes. It's one thing when it's cold, but when the snow starts flying and there's ice, then we really have some challenges with getting signs out. You can put the signs on the parsonage, or that type of thing, but you're still going, or even in your garage there, but still, getting those out, having staff to do that, that's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
I know your maintenance man, Steve, is, he performs a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
But it just added a lot more responsibilities to those folks, so.
You're right.
I think I'd like to make a motion that we agree to block northbound traffic now. And then, I think I'm fine also with the multiple cars being allowed, but I think there needs to be more talk and more conversation about signage, maybe no parking between school hours, so whatever that motion sounds like.
This is what it sounds like. Can you read that?
I'd like to make a motion to restrict northbound traffic on Biltmore between, what hours are we going to say?
2:45 to 3:20. 3:20.
Between 2:45 and 3:30?
3:30 would cover it, for sure.
Okay, and then, with additional conversation regarding signage?
I'll second that.
And thank you for the assistance there, Counselor Matthews.
All right, so we have a first and a second, so any other public comments? Any other questions from the counselors? I have one question, though, too, because we have the time on here, are there any days that you go half-days?
Yes, there are. We have about six days during the school year that we dismiss at 1:30, for professional development, for faculty and staff. I can provide those dates to you. And then, our last day of school, we dismiss at 11:00 AM. So there are changes to that. I can get my phone out of my purse and give them to you right now, if you want.
I don't think that we need them right now, but I think that that's something that, you know, because we've put these times-
Maybe could amend the motion to say that it's between hours of 1 and 3:30, and then you install the traffic pattern for the time that suits.
Yeah.
Except for the closure, the very last day, but-
And that day, more people will be parked on the lot anyway, because they'll be going to church, awards, mass, like, it won't be a typical drop-off, drop-off on that last day?
So some discussion on that point. And if you want to second that amendment, you can, but just some discussion on that point, though, is, for closing traffic to northbound, beginning as early as 1 o'clock, traffic coming on to Biltmore, the signs get out there and all that, but folks, when there is no traffic, when there are not teachers and other parents and other employees out there, someone on 16th Street's going to turn on to Biltmore, and all of a sudden, they're going to come to a blocked 15th Street that they can't enter, because they're, they're really forced into the, as I understand what we're doing here, they're forced into the parking lot, and they're, they're just-
Well, no, no, because the southbound lane would be open, you're only blocking the northbound lane, because that's how they exit out of it.
Okay.
If you, if on, on, on the diagram, it shows they're turning out of the west end of the parking lot, southbound onto Biltmore, and they're exiting off Biltmore. So you, that southbound lane would be kept open. So if someone turns from 16th Street, they still could exit. And that's, with the hours being 1 to 3:30, I'm not saying that we enforce it at 1, just it depends on when school dismisses for that day.
I would, just, since you're making the motion, and Jeff has seconded it, I would add a, to that motion, that we, that we need to, I think you maybe even said, run it past legal, run it past some of the traffic experts that we have. In addition to that, I think we need to review it again in a month, and-
Yes.
This is by no means a forever commitment.
Sure.
We need to be sure of what works best, and amend that, and review it no later than, you know, the end of the school year, but several times throughout the next several months, to be sure we're protecting the children, and still also protecting the assets of the town.
I'd just like to add one thing. Monte, in our minutes, could you put everything?
Yeah.
I have the slightest idea how to get this all.
That's what the video's for.
We'll work on it.
Okay.
All right, so, have you amended?
I'll shorten my suggested addition, is just that you, that we review this again in 30 days, and-
So I'll amend my amended motion, to put it from 1 to 3:30, with additional conversation and a review by our town manager and the police department, with, within a month.
And I second the amended amendment.
Okay. All right. With that said, we are going to take a vote. All right, all those in favor of the amended amendments, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, so you're approved 5-0, with what we discussed this evening, so they'll do So, they'll do the closure on northbound and then we'll talk about the signage and, or revisit the signage of whose responsibilities and what's going on with that and then revisit in about a month or so on how is it working, you know, other issues that may be happening of other traffic trying to flow through and that kind of thing, so.